Everybody's waiting. There we go. Thank you. You've been here. You've seen that. It's pretty exciting stuff when it goes on air. All right. This is the Common Council meeting to be held Tuesday, April 16, 2024 at 7:00 PM. The meeting is called to order. Would you please call the roll?
Elder Person Jezwikis.
Present.
Elder Person Bailey.
Present.
Elder Person Kastner.
Present.
Elder Person Akers.
Present.
Elder Person Sarian.
Present.
Okay. Item B is opening prayer. We have the respectable Pastor Tim Vick here this evening.
Careful, careful. Let's pray. Dear God, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for this group of leaders of our city. I pray that you be with tonight's meeting, help good decisions to be made. Pray that you'd be with our first responders, emergency providers, that you would keep them safe as they protect us in our city. This being work zone awareness week, I pray you protect those that are providing maintenance and road construction improvements in our city as well. In your name we pray. Amen.
Item C is a pledge of allegiance. Would you please join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving along to item D, approval of the April 3, 2024 Common Council minutes. Entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
By Elder Person Akers, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Elder Person Drizwicki, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Under E, mayor's report. Don't have any report other than at the turf, the most of the stormwater to drain the bowls is in. They finished that today before the rain, so that's actually pretty cool. Item F, automatic reports, are there any? Actually, under mayor's report, before I do the mayor's report, typically in an election year, at this common council meeting, we have a swearing, a formal swearing-in ceremony. We're not doing it this year, but I do want to thank Elder Person Akers, Elder Person, or congratulate Elder Person Akers, Elder Person Kastner, and Elder Person Sarian for their reelections this past election cycle.
We didn't last time we were elected either.
Huh?
We didn't the last time, I don't think.
I think we did, because Andrew and Bruce gave speeches.
Yeah, those we did, but for us, we haven't done it in a while, and we're okay with that.
If you would each like to take 20 minutes and...
Nope. Been there, done that.
Yeah. Congratulations on the election. No, I remember the last swearing-in ceremony, Elder Person Bailey spoke for about 45 minutes and...
Yes, that was a good 45 minutes.
It wasn't 45 minutes, it was closer to five or 10, but it was a very good speech, and Elder Person Drizwicki spoke as well. So if we want to have a swearing-in ceremony and the opportunity, we can certainly do that, but...
They don't need to hear anymore from us. They've heard enough.
I know you don't want to hear a poem from me.
Elder Person Sarian is prone to reciting poems, and they're always very good. So I'd miss that. If you would give me one in writing, that would be...
Good enough reason not to do it.
I can recite it now.
Okay. Do you want to recite it now? All right. Are there any automatic reports this evening?
She can do it under the automatic.
Are there any announcements this evening? Is there any citizen commentary? There's no citizen commentary this evening. Everybody's here for an item on the agenda, it looks like, right? Okay. Public hearings, under I, public hearing, a special use permit for Van A Tattoo Studio proposed tattoo business to be located 4629 South Hunter Nate Street, submitted by Vanessa Ruelas, I hope I pronounced that properly, doing businesses Van A Tattoo Studio and Saleem Shalha? Shali, sorry, doing businesses Forest Park Real Estate. The items are to approve a resolution for the special use as well as approve a site plan review.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is a very similar proposal to a few months ago. So if it seems familiar, it's probably because it is. The primary difference is that Van A Tattoo Studio is being proposed in a tenant space, just a few tenant spaces down from where it previously had been. Originally, the applicant had proposed to go into Beauty by Lulu. Unfortunately, that did not work out between the applicant and the owner of that tenant space. Instead, she is looking to go into Supreme Detailers, which is a barber shop. Van A Tattoo Studio is going to occupy a portion of Supreme Detailers, again, their barber shop. Supreme Detailers will continue to operate. The property is owned C4, which permits tattoo studios as a special use. The proposed hours of operation are 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Tuesday through Sunday, being closed on Mondays. Overall, the site is in good condition. The only note was to remove and relocate wheel blocks that were located and being stored in one of the parking stalls. The parking requirements, 70 parking stalls are required based on all the users in the tenant, or in the multi-tenant building. There's only 69 on site. Common Council may waive the shortage. Plan Commission recommended approval on March 12 at their meeting. Thus far, we have received one letter of objection and no letters of support.
Okay, thank you. Is, the applicants are here this evening, or the applicant is here this evening, is there anyone else that would like to speak for against informational purposes concerning this item? I've received one, or the city has received one comment in opposition to the tattoo special use. Dear Council, I am the owner of Brew City Tattoo, an award-winning licensed tattoo studio. We've been successfully operating for over 13 years in the city of Greenfield. My business partner, Andres Luna, is an established Greenfield resident and respected professional studio or tattoo artist for nearly 30 years. We are requesting the special use permit proposal for Van A Studio be denied for the following reasons. And these are as presented in the letter, and these are in official positions of the city of Greenfield. Van A Tattoo Vanessa Ruelas has been and currently is putting the public at risk by operating illegally without permitting health inspection or studio licensing required per Wisconsin Statute 463.10 parent 3 since at least November of 2023, initially doing business at 4633 South Hunter Nate Street and currently at 4629 South Hunter Nate Street. This is a considerable, considered a punishable offense of up to $500 fine and/or 30 days imprisonment, citing Wisconsin Statute 463.18. This was brought to our attention from disruptions to our business at 4637 South Hunter Nate Street caused by her customers repeatedly mistaking our studio as the location for their scheduled appointments with Ms. Ruelas. We have security camera footage of interaction with her clients and the confusion and disturbances it caused. Initially, we believe someone was fraudulently collecting deposits for appointments with our studio. Interacting with these disoriented customers in our lobby determined Ms. Ruelas had advertised and communicated addresses within the Omega Shopping Plaza for her place of business. Upon arrival to the premises, these individuals approached the only marked studio establishment, Brew City Tattoo. This takes time away from our clients to identify and address the misunderstanding and also slows our business operations. I have included links and screenshots to the active business websites and social media engagement of Van A Tattoo Vanessa Ruelas supporting our claims of the unlawful activity below. There are hours of operation and the addresses clearly outlined. I successfully submitted a booking request through booksea.com website below for Van A Tattoo located at 4629 South Hunter Nate Street and received a text message response, sender number 262880, and I won't read it, but it's in the record, indicating pricing and availability on 4/13/24. The screen capture of that reply is also included. Then there are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 links, one to Facebook, one to Booksea, one to Instagram, one to Venue Inc., and one to vanatattoo studio dot bigcartel dot com. Link to OneDrive with screenshots from the above sites and texts received if you click on a link that's in the original email. You will find images of social media posts supporting recent work performed by Ms. Ruelas, promoting discount-seeking customers, and even a post soliciting unskilled individuals to seek Ms. Ruelas for a training course in tattooing. These were all obtained through simple internet searches in the support of allegedly fraudulent operation. Knowing Van A Tattoo has not been granted a special use or occupancy permit, there has not been any health inspections to ensure client safety or in a sanitary environment with proper lighting and signage. Being familiar with Health Department regulations, we believe barbering, hair styling being performed in a shared environment where tattoos are also performed is considered hazardous and unsafe. There is a risk to our stellar reputation due to the proximity of this illegitimate and risky operation underway. Any negative outcomes being shared by displeased or harmed clients of Van A Tattoo could easily mistake our studio as the culprit as we are the only licensed operation at the Highway 100 and Layton intersection. Clients often don't remember the name of the studio they went to, but rather the location. Having two studios in nearly adjacent locations easily contributes to this confusion with both customers and departments of regulation. When before the Common Council at our public hearing in 2010, we were asked where other tattoo studios were currently located in the city of Greenfield. This stemmed from the members being mindful of an oversaturating any area with studios, businesses of this nature. We hope this is still a focus of the council and denying the special use permit for this neighboring studio would support this strategy. Ms. Ruelas was, has disregarded all law, policy, and procedure required by the city of Greenfield and the state of Wisconsin to operate a tattoo business. Due to this flagrant misconduct, we must have concern there are other legalities and other required procedures for safety that Ms. Ruelas has not adhered to. For the protection of the public and to discourage the circumventing of the city and state's required processes in the future, we strongly ask this special use permit be denied. Sincerely, Michelle Sagard, Brew City Tattoo. So did you want to come to the microphone and respond to some of those? Those are allegations, that's public comment. You do not have to respond to them. Certainly, it would create questions as to whether or not you've been operating in the business at that location. You have nothing to say? Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for against informational purposes concerning this item? Is there anyone else that would like to say anything for against informational purposes concerning this item? I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion by Elder Person Akers.
Second.
Second by Elder Person Bailey, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. With regard to item I, 1A and B, does the council wish to take any action with regard to approve a resolution for the special use permit for Van A Studio at the location indicated and approve the site plan review?
Is it under discussion briefly, Carl?
Needs to be a motion first.
Apologies.
So you can have a motion to approve or a motion against? And then somebody can second it, and then under discussion, then you can vote on the, right, you know?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just, another option would be that, I mean, there have been some pretty serious allegations in this letter. The applicant's chosen not to address them at this time, which is certainly her right, but another option would be to lay this over to give some time to investigate whether there's any truth to the complaints or not. That would be another option.
That's what I'd prefer, Chris. At least for myself.
I would prefer that, too. I'd like to have this looked at more.
Okay. Is it consent of the council to hold this over for one, till the next meeting? To give the applicant the opportunity to respond?
Doesn't sound like they're gonna.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Does that require a motion?
I'll make a motion to hold it over till next meeting.
By Elder Person Akers, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Elder Person Drizwicki, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. All right. Jay, old business, I don't, actually, I do have an appointment to the zoning board of appeals. His name is Paul Haggas. He lives in Elder Person Drizwicki's district. Have you met him? Did he, did he call you?
I don't think so. I don't think he's called.
I would appoint Paul Haggas, and I can get you the information to, as one member to the zoning board of appeals for a term to expire May 1 of '26. Entertain a motion to confirm.
Motion to confirm.
By Elder Person Drizwicki, is there a second?
Second.
Thankful by Elder Person Akers. I know you said you had one, Pam, but...
He has not called me back, so...
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Under item K1, a summons and complaint received from Walmart Real Estate Business Trust.
This claim was referred to Attorney Seibel.
And I would, and I would like to thank Walmart, the largest, one of the largest employers in the city, for not missing a beat and bringing a summons and complaint against us in 2024, as it has for a number of years gone by, claiming that their property is over assessed. There was some sarcasm with that. Item K2 is a claim received from Julie Dombach and Brett Pennecker.
This claim was referred to our city attorney.
Item 3 is a summons and, summons and claim for relief re-accessive assessment received from NS Retail Holdings LLC.
This claim was referred to Attorney Seibel.
Festival Foods? Festival Foods?
That's Festival Foods, yeah.
Okay.
That one's a little bit more complicated. Item 4, appointment of common council president for a near-term, I would accept nominations.
Elder Person Sarian.
Nomination for Elder Person Sarian, is there another?
I'll nominate myself.
Are there other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Bruce Bailey.
Okay, so there are, are there any other nominations?
I'm not nominating myself, nope, peace out.
All right, so should we do them in order? Sure, I randomly pick which one goes first in order.
You can do whatever you want. You can do it alphabetically, you can do it, whatever.
There's been a nomination made for Elder Person Akers.
No, there has not.
By Elder Person Sarian. Do you just call them nominations? Can you call for the nomination of Elder Person Sarian?
Do you want a second?
Is there a second? To Elder Person Akers made the nomination, was there a second to the nomination?
Come on.
I'll second.
Second by Elder Person Sarian. Can you call?
Elder Person Jezwikis.
No.
Elder Person Bailey.
No.
Elder Person Kastner.
No.
Elder Person Akers.
Aye.
Elder Person Sarian.
Aye.
Okay. The next is a nomination for Elder Person Kastner. Is there a second?
Who nominated him?
He nominated him, Elder Person Kastner nominated himself. Is there a second to that nomination? Nomination dies for a lack of second. Next nomination is for Elder Person Bailey. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Elder Person Drizwicki made the nomination, second by Elder Person Bailey. Would you call on that?
Elder Person Jezwikis.
Aye.
Elder Person Bailey.
Aye.
Elder Person Kastner.
No.
Elder Person Akers.
No.
Elder Person Sarian.
No.
Okay, are there any other nominations for common council president? If I'm not mistaken, under the rules, until there is another successful nomination, the existing common council president remains in place. But I don't know. And I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that our city attorney is...
Honestly, I don't know either. I believe that's, that is the case, though.
I think this is the first time in a very long time.
I will nominate myself again.
Elder Person Kastner has nominated himself. Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? That nomination dies for a lack of second.
Then I'll nominate Pam Akers. Do I have a second?
Drizwicki has nominated Pam Akers. Is there a second? Is there a second? Nomination dies for a lack of second. Okay, who has?
Bailey.
So Elder Person Bailey has now nominated himself. Is there a second to that nomination?
Second.
Second by Elder Person Drizwicki. It's reversed from the previous. Would you please call?
Elder Person Jezwikis.
Aye.
Elder Person Bailey.
Aye.
Elder Person Kastner.
No.
Elder Person Akers.
No.
Elder Person Sarian.
No.
So there's only one of you that hasn't made a nomination yet, I think? Right, you made one, you made one, two, you made one, you made one. Elder Person Sarian, you want to make a nomination?
No.
Okay, so I'd ask that that be placed on the next agenda. That's probably the most appropriate thing. And we'll verify who the common council president is by the rule. I'll let you know, okay? All right.
Mayor, I just got a text. It's from my house. I better go home. Is that all right if I'm excused? It's pretty important. I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. Elder Person Kastner had to be excused at 7:22. Item 5A, these are council appointments. So are there any changes with regard to the Finance and Human Resource Committee, Legislative Committee, Park and Rec Board, or Planning Commissioner?
What did you ask?
So, so typically what happens is that the, the, there usually aren't too many changes.
Right.
To committees, are there any changes to the council appointments?
I don't have any.
Nope, no, there aren't.
I'd entertain a motion for the council to
I'll make a motion to
Reaffirm the appointments.
Reaffirm the current appointments.
By Elder Person Akers, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Elder Person Drizwicki. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. With regard to item 5B, mayor appointments confirmed by council, this would be for the, there will not be a board of health.
Yes, there is. It's just a different one.
There is a board of health, but it won't meet because it doesn't have any business. There will be a consolidated, there will be, have to be a new ordinance drafted. We talked, I talked to Tim, I think, in your office with regard to drafting a new ordinance for the appointment of, and the terms and those things of the three representatives to the consolidated Southwest Urban Health Department.
Okay.
And we'll try to get that moving along.
We'll hold off on that one until...
We'll hold off on the, the board of health appointments, but with regard to the CDA, the Public Library Board, and the Board of Public Works, I would reappoint each of the existing members. I'd entertain a motion to confirm my reappointment.
Motion to reconfirm.
To confirm by Elder Person Akers, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Elder Person Sarian, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Under item 6A, there's a council appointment to the Board of Public Works. Currently, Mr. John Grabber is on the, on the board and I think has a desire to continue. I'd entertain a motion to confirm.
Motion to confirm, John.
By Elder Person Akers. Second by Elder Person Bailey, all in all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Under 6B, mayor appointments confirmed by council. This is the Civil Service Commission, the Fire and Police Commission, the Board of Review, an alternate member to the Board of Review, tree commissioners, an alternate member to the tree commissioner, tree commission, excuse me, and one member to the zoning board of appeals, other than the one that was appointed previously. I would reappoint each and every member as presented and entertain a motion to confirm.
I move to confirm.
Motion by Elder Person Sarian, second by Elder Person Bailey, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'm trying to move my screen, I apologize. Under item C, mayor appointments, C, little I, is one alternate member to the Planning Commission for a term to expire 5/1 of '27. Two alternate members to the zoning board of appeals and designation of the chairperson of the zoning board of appeals. I would reappoint and designate each and every member as indicated. Entertain a motion to confirm that, although I'm not sure I need it, but...
Doesn't say we need it, but I'll, motion to confirm.
Motion by Elder Person, is there a second?
Second.
Thankful by Elder Person Drizwicki, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 7 is the approval of various applications for 2023, 2024 operator licenses. Subject to all the legal disclaimers, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
By Elder Person Bailey, is there a second?
Second.
By Elder Person Sarian, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 8 is to approve a temporary Class B retailer's license received from the Harley's Owner Group for an indoor event on May 11 from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Entertain a motion to approve.
I move for approval.
By Elder Person Sarian, is there a second?
Second.
Thankful by Elder Person Drizwicki, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 9 is to approve an outdoor special event application for the Greater Greenfield Lions Club Cruising Car Show located in 10777 West Cold Spring Road at Colwicky Park on May 25, 2024, and waive all applicant, applicable licenses, permit fees, application fees, and including the outdoor special event. I'd entertain a motion to approve with the encouragement that everybody attend this wonderful car show, one of the best in the city.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Elder Person Bailey, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Elder Person Drizwicki, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. I'd ask that the St. John the Evangelist Catholic Church festival be postponed for a month. That was a joke. They're from there. All right, item 10 is to approve an outdoor special event application for St. John the Evangelist Catholic Church from July 26 through July 28, including the licenses and permits as indicated.
Well, make a motion to approve.
Motion by Elder Person Bailey, is there a second?
Second.
Thankful by Elder Person Akers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item number 11 is our most exciting item on the agenda this evening. Approve a resolution to release and extinguish any right or interest in the city of Greenfield in a 20-foot drain adjustment heretofore granted on April 18, 1980, and document number 5394479, which 20-feet storm drain adjustment is described in the agenda. I'd entertain a I'd entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Motion by Elder Person Akers, second by Elder Person Bailey, would you please call on that one?
Elder Person Jezwikis.
Aye.
Elder Person Bailey.
Aye.
Elder Person Kastner is absent. Elder Person Akers.
Aye.
Elder Person Sarian.
Aye.
Case 41, item 12 is approve a class sharing memorandum of understanding with the city of Milwaukee for a power line trail extension feasibility study. This is $4,000, I believe, and it was part of the rest of the process of the trail. I'd entertain a motion to approve that.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Elder Person Akers, second by Elder Person Bailey, would you please call?
Elder Person Jezwikis.
Aye.
Elder Person Bailey.
Aye.
Elder Person Akers.
Aye.
Elder Person Sarian.
Aye.
Item 13 is approve a storm sewer easement agreement with Arnold J. Drewitz, 5030 South 68th Street. Entertain a motion to approve that easement agreement.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Elder Person Bailey, second by Elder Person Akers, would you call?
Elder Person Jezwikis.
Aye.
Elder Person Bailey.
Aye.
Elder Person Akers.
Aye.
Elder Person Sarian.
Aye.
Item 14 is to adopt a resolution to approve a right-of-way plat and relocation order for project ID 2155-15-00, South 43rd Street, from West Cold Spring Road to West Howard Avenue. Entertain a motion to adopt that resolution.
Motion to adopt the resolution.
By Elder Person Akers, is there a... By Elder Person Akers, is there a second? By Elder Person Bailey, would you please call?
Elder Person Juzwicki?
Aye.
Elder Person Bailey?
Aye.
Elder Person Akers?
Aye.
Elder Person Sarian?
Aye.
Item fifteen is approve site landscaping and architectural plans for a proposed bathroom at Saint John the Evangelist Catholic Church at eighty-five hundred West Cold Spring Road, submitted by Boyd Coleman Doing Business, Struck Right, Inc.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Elder Person Bailey, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Elder Person Drizwicki. I'm certain it'll be a holy bathroom. I'm pretty excited about it.
We would have no bathroom, but it is very exciting.
Yeah.
I mean, we have bathrooms, but they're inside.
Yeah, I think there's only trees here now, right?
No, actually, there is just sidewalk.
Is there just sidewalks, so you can't even, okay. All right, motion was made, second, would you please call?
Elder Person Juzwicki?
Aye.
Elder Person Bailey?
Aye.
Elder Person Akers?
Aye.
Elder Person Sarian?
Aye.
Item sixteen, discussion decision regarding agreeing with Apple for an Apple, Apple Developers License, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
By Elder Person Drizwicki, is there a second? Second by Elder Person Bailey, would you please call?
Elder Person Juzwicki?
Aye.
Elder Person Bailey?
Aye.
Elder Person Akers?
Aye.
Elder Person Sarian?
Aye.
Item seventeen, discussion decision revise the Department of Neighborhood Services organizational chart.
Hi, Denise.
I'd entertain a motion to approve that change.
I move for approval.
By Elder Person Sarian, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Elder Person Drizwicki, I think you need to call that.
Elder Person Drizwicki?
Aye.
Elder Person Bailey?
Aye.
Elder Person Akers?
Aye.
Elder Person Sarian?
Aye.
Item eighteen, discussion decision to create job description sets, sell, recruit, and hire lead fabricator mechanic in Division of Public Works, entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
By Elder Person Akers, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Elder Person Drizwicki, would you please call?
Elder Person Juzwicki?
Aye.
Elder Person Bailey?
Aye.
Elder Person Akers?
Aye.
Elder Person Sarian?
Aye.
Nineteen, discussion decision to establish two thousand and twenty-four sewer service rates as proposed in the two thousand and twenty-four budget, entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion, but I have a question to, I'll make a motion to approve, but I have a question.
Motion by Elder Person Akers, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Elder Person Sarian, under discussion?
Is, am I correct when I read this, that it's actually less than what we originally approved?
I don't know. Do you know, Jeff?
I don't know this is sanitary.
This is sanitary, not the storm, right?
Was the one that...
Yeah, it looked like it was lower than, and, and I'm okay with that, I was just questioning.
So this is sanitary, and this was, came through Finance Committee, Paula was involved, so I can answer the question on it.
Anybody in Finance, remember? I mean, if, it's, it's okay, I just, to me, it looked like it dropped, and I was just wanting, because less is better than more, in my book. It's hard to pull it up.
If you want to reconsider it, I can get the information to you, I don't think it was a substantive...
No, it wasn't, but she said either way, she's just interested. I was just interested, yeah.
I mean, if it was one of those plugs to say, yeah, we didn't raise it as much as we could have, and all that stuff, then you did a good job, because I don't think it was raised as much as it could.
Okay.
Right?
That's, that's what I think, you know?
But I can provide that, too.
You can just, somebody can just tell me, but that was just my question.
Okay, all right. Motion was made, second, would you call?
Elder Person Juzwicki?
Aye.
Elder Person Bailey?
Aye.
Elder Person Akers?
Aye.
Elder Person Sarian?
Aye.
My screen went small, let me just one second, please. I guess I'll do it this way. Item number twenty, discussion decision to transfer the clearing account balance in excess of seven percent of the total escrow fund, Fund Eight Twenty-Five, to Genrez in the amount of ten thousand four hundred ninety-five dollars. Entertain a motion to approve.
I move for approval.
Motion by Elder Person Sarian, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Elder Person Bailey, would you call?
Elder Person Juzwicki?
Aye.
Elder Person Bailey?
Aye.
Elder Person Akers?
Aye.
Elder Person Sarian?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll take item twenty-one and twenty-two together, that's for schedules, approving schedules of dispersments as well as mileage reimbursements, entertain a motion to approve.
I move for approval.
Second.
By Sarian, second by Akers, would you call?
Elder Person Juzwicki?
Aye.
Elder Person Bailey?
Aye.
Elder Person Akers?
Aye.
Elder Person Sarian?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving along, item twenty-three, the Common Council is on the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute nineteen eighty-five, parent one, parent little G, conferring with little legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is, or is likely to become involved regarding the item considered and tabled on March fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, namely special use permit combination Class A alcohol license applications for nexus vape and smoke. I'd entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.